Thank you, Chair Allison. Here is Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Chair Allison. We have a team tonight that's going to present on the ALC Phase Two construction update. If you recall, that first project out of the chute after the referendum passed was the area learning center security enhancement project. We modified the entrance to create a more secure entrance, added additional security equipment, and it's been a lot of patience in the main office to make it more individual space and promote the more secure area. That was Phase One. Phase Two now is just kicking out. Our team from the whole of Architects and Engineers and Charles Anderson Construction, Paul Allen Postle, who's leading our project, and the whole Architects and Engineers, Adrian Willoughby, who's the Senior Project Manager, Charles Anderson, are here today. Along with Principal, I got you here, and tell us about the Phase Two ALC.
Thank you. It's great to be here today. So maybe an update on the ALC project, as well as Adrian can give a little bit about what we're doing. Is this, do I click this to view? All right. Like, that motivates me to type the Q and A. So, a quick overview again for those that have not been following along. The referendum IP covered a lot of projects across the whole district, including safety and security, deferred maintenance, and classroom building updates for more of these spaces. Here is a list of, just a little bit of what's going on right now. Every one of those is a big project, and we are in various phases, and so this gives you a little bit of an update of what the project completion is. You can see several projects are at 100% completion, and then we have good reports that they're being used well and appreciated by all the staff and students. That's great to see. And then the remainder of the projects are in a medium state. Some of them are in construction, some of them are still in design, although we are wrapping that up. And then a few of the last projects, Central Middle School and Center of the Park or whatever that building may have its name and future date, are not started with designing. Those are a final phase. They are coming up in the book within the next year or however we start designing those. But because of the seismic construction, those are waiting for their turn. As a reminder, as we lead into the ALC, each one of the projects has what we call corporate, so we work with stakeholders at each site to develop the design specifically for that project in the scope of work being done, and involves different stakeholders for rebuilding that group. And then after that process, after we get the scope and the foreplan settled with that corporate, we then do user group meetings. So we meet with individual teachers about each space of the building, talk about all kinds of detail like counter heights and cabinet doors and outlets and all those kinds of things, so that by the time we're done with the project, we've got really everything that touches that project involved within the design fix. This is an example of the drawings that we developed and drew a lot of. All right, so on to the ALC, and we're going to let Gretchen talk a little bit about her experience first.
Okay. So this is really exciting for us because the room that we are working on in Phase Two is room 101, which back when the school was an elementary school, it was the media center. And it's become a hub for us, but it really feels like there are a lot of things going on there without a lot of meat to the whole experience. We have a washer and dryer in there that was part of the big school project, and we also have a kitchen. So those things are used for gathering spaces and for student projects. It's also classroom space, and it's used for independent study and for currently for physics. And it's also where students gather when they have time for their day either before or after 9:16 or college classes. And it's where we have our staff meetings. Like, it's our largest gathering space. So anyone who spends with ALC celebration for either honor roll or math series, that's the space. So it's been really interesting to go in this, knowing that there are so many spaces, and it just felt like we were a feel or a unified spot in our building, and this has really been exciting to be a part of. Our whole goal is for it to be student-friendly spaces, and one of the things that's come through with all the user groups, students sampling, is a lot of being cozy and welcoming and homey. And one thing that keeps popping up is here's this idea of fireplace, which has kind of been a symbol for their roots, and that stuff is nice when they were looking at the washer and dryer and just feeling like they want the space as like a home away from the hall. So a place that students can stand, can gather, and celebrate, but also a function of, um, to be. So that's, that's what's coming up there. And it's really exciting because we have a room and how that's come together.
For clarity, it's the idea, apparently.
Yeah.
All right, so that was a great introduction to the project. There's a schedule here shown on the bottom, and we are planning to go to it soon here, and then get this open for the fall, so it'll be a small project that should be available throughout the summer. Here is a floor plan of this space, so if you, if you're familiar with the building, in the upper right kind of cutoff, this is the front door, and then that gray line, which is the wall of the hallway, is the new office space across the, or right across the street from the office, and real property with the front door. And a big part of the design is to open up that wall as much as possible and put learning on display here a little bit, to make this feel a little bit more like a home. So I think one of my hopes with this project is that when you walk into that building and get into that kind of lobby space, that it doesn't feel like a 1960s school anymore. It'll feel more like an open spot with a homey feel and a welcoming place for students. So then the spaces divided into kind of two big pieces, I'll say. The blue is really more of a flexible classroom space, so it's going to have more furniture that can move around for the most part. It includes a teaching wall kind of a display, so it can be used for those kinds of functions. And then on the other side, where we're putting a lot more of a special function, so the orange piece represents the kitchen, which is also life skills lab for this space, and includes some great amenities for the students of the ALC, and then a small group room basically. And then that side is a little bit more open, so actually the counter actually is open to the hallway, and there's some great ideas that came from the corporate, like getting important microwaves over that common, so that from the hallway you can eat a lunch or breakfast or whatever you can use again, and making it more of a gathering spot, a place that really welcomes students. Another move to make the space as flexible as possible is, you can see that kind of squiggly line in the middle there is one of those aquable glass walls, so that can be closed up again, and you can use that space as a large group conference or a classroom, let's say. Or you can, you can open it up and have it to join together kind of like an open plan, or you can close it back, and you can have some more safety control in that. And then everybody likes to see the renderings, so these are renderings of that space. It's a little bit hard to see on these monitors, but there is a glass wall there, so the space is glassed in, but it gives it a very cool feel. Now, if you notice there. And this is the view kind of right when you turn the corner around the office. And then this one is inside of that space, so to the right, we're looking through to the kitchen side, and then out to the nice windows, and we're updating the space with the lighting, of course, and the new interior design, finishes and some diverse color in there. Now we've stepped in a little bit farther and are looking back, so we're kind of on the kitchen side, looking back to the classroom. You can see that TV up in the front, and then that corner on the upper right or the far right there is kind of thought to be that far corner, so we've kind of bookshelves around there, have some furniture in it, and you can settle in that space. But all that, it's still very flexible, so we're going to get more of that little presentation space as well. And then this is a view from the, probably looking into that life skills or, right, you can see that counter. We're going through some minor updates with Gretchen right now to help address some of the concerns of the staff, but the idea here is that it's open and accessible again to students, as well as being able to function well for a class, basically, like those kinds of classes. Then in the far corner, you can see there's that smaller counter, so that is very open and glassy space, but so we think also it's an upgraded place, or something, that has some small group work happening. And then here, we're looking back again at the kitchen area, so we've stepped inside of the space, and you can see there's an island in the middle, the kind of space of congregation around there, as well as sort of all facing to the kitchen or laundry and those things again for that space.
I'm going to do that, but the corner.
Yeah.
Instead of being prominent element of that space, washing machine.
Yeah, we're kind of putting in what a lot of the, go back there. So those are the updates we have for the ALC. Is there any questions, comments?
I have one question. So with the flat line again, all three, did you have?
Yes, I'm sorry. That is, I don't like the other one.
It looks great. I've been there, and this will be so much more friendly and open to the students and the staff, I think that, I mean, I was saying, just to see it from that, maybe on the TV they can just put the fire, you know, that channel, that fire place, and just send it there, but, you know, no, it's a great experience.
Sure. All right, well, we're going to be covering just a few construction updates for you while I'm here. Yeah, so we got the new elementary at first, we can kind of hit those high level points. Should be familiar with what the North Star is going to be anyway, but, so we've got the new elementary school, so we've got new furniture, a hundred and what thousands worth for a building going in there, about $43 million total budget cost, so we're still on track for the opening for this fall here, because that's exciting news. If you want to go to the next picture there, we have four photos, so they're all exterior drone shots, but I believe there's a lot of stuff going in on the inside as well, but a couple of things that we have done over the time, they've placed over 5,000 cubic yards of concrete, so that's over 20 million pounds of concrete. They've placed over 700,000 pounds of steel at this building, and about 12 miles of conduit, so that's enough to go from North Star, downtown, and back here. And that's, that's pretty conservative, that's what we do. So a couple of things you can see sort of going on on the exterior photos, we probably go to, oh, I'm sorry. So the end of this, we should have all the non-ballistic glazing complete, as well as by the end of this part, you should have all the exterior glazing, metal panels, fantasy going around the exterior there.
Can you explain non-ballistic panels versus ballistic? Ballistic might seem like a hot choice of word.
Yeah, so like at the storm shelter, so all that is ballistic related to glass, so overall, it has that withstand of ballistic missile rating of 250 miles an hour. So if you took a two-by-four, flying at 250 miles an hour, it has to be able to withstand that impact. So that's what that is. And then the regular glass, just normal glass. It's a ballistic missile, scary words, but yes. But they got a lot of interior MEB rather than going into out, so they've got ceiling insulation, wall finishes, carpeting, as well as terrazzo, and then they're gearing up for final site work this spring, as soon as all that white stuff and clothes goes away, as well as a new intersection that's going to be starting this spring. So for South Campus, just a couple of quick updates there, some of the major milestones completed, I think this picture, but at the new portion, some of the major milestones that have been completed there is all the foundations have been quartered, back-built, structural pre-casts is up, and all the structural ceiling joists. They're currently working on exterior envelope, that includes the sheathing, insulation, weather barriers, roofing, and curves. So the next big milestone for them there is getting the slab on grade for the end of March, that'll pick off the interior frame, the MEB upgrades. So there as well, on track for opening as well. So at the new high school, it's going to be some fun facts first. We've had over seven and a half million cubic feet of dirt removed on this site so far, and a lot more to go, but that's enough to cover all of downtown in one quid of dirt. It's a lot of dirt. We've placed over 7,500 cubic yards of concrete, so that's 30 million pounds of concrete, with another 30 million more to go. We've got over three and a half million pounds of steel in place right now, and about another six million pounds to go. And similarly, that 12 miles of conduit, we've got that in at the high school, not by best guess, we've got about another 100 more miles of wood in place. So some of the other ongoing work that you can see in the photos, we've got a drone video, hopefully it'll be able to play out, and you'll be able to see a little bit closer than a part of where it is, but some of the other ongoing work, we've got the outbuildings, which is a concession from Ticket Booth, as well as Chiller Enclosures that are going. So then this spring will also be, assuming the stadium, which again, all the white stuff, you can't see it, but there's a, there's a nice first lip of asphalt and all that white stuff with the track. And then we'll also be starting the north field, the west lots this summer as well, in the west fields. So as far as Phase One, three stories, so you can see we're working on the exterior envelope, we've got a lot of slab on grade, and concrete topping floors going on, as well as interior frame and heat roughing. So on average, we're probably about 65 to 75 guys a day on site, working through all these different trades we have on site. Then when we do our big concrete floors, we usually help that by about 15 loads. As well as the Phase Twos, so for the field house, which was kind of in the previous picture there, which we'll see again, but we've got precast and steel direction, as well as the concrete double tees and the plank going on in there as well. We actually just wrapped up the precast storm shelter in that area today. And then as far as the existing buildings, so we're gearing up for the locker room and boiler room work, which is getting started here pretty shortly. We're up the existing tunnels, working on getting a lot of the boiler piping, chiller piping placed ahead of the tunnels, that way when that three-story opens, we've got all the infrastructure ready, ready, this building, and then moving ahead to the area of the J, so the hammerhead, the dolphin melody, and so that'll be starting this summer. The lock on there.
That's it. Inside the. It's a very clean window, and I just know that. The learning studios will be ready for us to finalize by end of September. By January, we'll move students into that next phase of construction, renovating the media center and that circle, which is going to be more of the higher center. Only late in the night, I suppose. Fun way to stay, before you do, a fun way to stay, kind of, is to go on our website under the, may go down to, um, overview of projects, and you can click right into updates around the construction crews. There's a page, grade school, you can click on updates from the construction crews and see the current videos and drawings. They load up a lot of the results, video updates. So it's kind of fun to go all there and get the views.
I can send a question and a quote, because have any of the projects been affected by the COVID?
I mean, they've, they've been impacted, but we've made it work with the schedule that we've got. You know, a lot of things, you try to put things in place in specific order, because that's the best order, it's not the only order.
Hey, I've got some Charles Anderson, heard the money. Don't shoot me out, right? We're away from Middle School, over the, different ones.
I think I would suggest that that was a very helpful answer. There's a lot of things that could have gone wrong in the K V and Juggler that made work, so definitely affecting projects, and we're a little bit worried about bidding for the next set of projects, so we've had a great, great, great run with you so far on these projects, and we've got a lot done, well within budget, but we're hoping to get some, a lot of inflation there, so cross your fingers for that.
Well, thank you. A lot of targets for you to start. Dr. Neimester?
Well, it's exciting to watch this, and yes, I do have stock in all on the website, because I love architecture. So it's been fun to watch. I look at the size of the, the high school, and I think of that as people plan for the transition to that, and I have to think somebody thinks he's going to go to all three perches in certain areas. So he's looking forward to that, I think. But this comment to me, it was kind of what I felt when I looked at that, kind of what I was feeling was a freshman, a campus, if you look at that, you know, you have to go from Burton to the West Wing in 10 minutes flat, and you can't take the bus to the Pits to walk, you just cross that edge and the bridge. So I'm sure the signing will be wonderful, but I know how people always complain when they came to more, and you can't get there from here. So it'll be real interesting. When you put a chip in, everybody can't, a directional chip in, that's. I don't think, you know, how do they, they must have a big design part that's signage, that's colored, is it one of the?
Yes, we have color-coded parts of the building, so there's some cues that represent our work for that. The other thing that I think is really, then, really kind of about working on that building, which has the challenge of working around buildings, but we're really breaking the circles open in a number of ways, so the current building has a lot of constraints where everybody has to pass through that, I call it the web in the middle, and we now are going to have multiple ways to go through that, as well as things like opening up the learning complexes on the second floor, that will all help kind of orientation, that won't be just like, get in the loop and get off when you find a number of advantages.
It's a normal.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing that I think, in working with the corporate on high school, really emphasized to you, they are trying to create a sense of a smaller school within a larger school, and breaking up the learning studio, that helps a lot with that. The other thing is, certainly there are times when you're going to need to go from the north side of the building to the south side of the building, it's a big building, but not, not that big. But for the most part, students will spend half or two-thirds of their day in that three-story tower and the whole two-story, so that the travel that they have to do every hour is not quite as great as crossing the whole building, but I'm hoping that that really helps mitigate some of that feel of the building, we feel a little bit more connected, part of the smaller.
Well, I was also thinking about having that accessibility and people with special needs, and, you know, like, really, it's exciting.
The metaphors, well, usually behind the sign navigate water, and there's, we have a number of ways to get what you, you know, water. Some people go into the most common areas, and they want to be where everyone else is, and then some people want to go in areas where there's fewer people, and it's a less stressful way to get what you need to be, it might not be the shortest way, but maybe the least stressful way. And so this design looks pretty complicated, and it'll take a little bit to orient oneself to that building, but once students do, they're going to find that there's not a lot of constraints on me, helping move around that building.
Well, it's exciting. Any other questions?
To remind you, our supplies wasn't like outdoor spaces, turn field, most importantly, later on, next summer. So we'll be doing some of that this summer, so the stadium portion, we'll have that on for November or fall, and then we're also going to be working on the Great Line North Fields this summer as well, and then that west track, East Field, that'll be more of the same, and then the rest.
My question, such a comment, did you play in the sandbox so out of the young man?
Yeah. It's still got some mud on it. Trying to get over here.
I just, you're in the end for your work. I can tell you like your job. All right, well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is discussion item B2, instructional coaching model update. Is that established?
Yes. Welcome. Thanks, Chair Allison, Professor Bor, Dr. Krasnick, and then, I have the exciting opportunity to be able to share with you an update on our instructional coaching model, and I have brought some instructional coaches with me today, and the teachers, to help share with you the exciting work that we're doing with student learning and instructional coaching. So just a little bit of a background, the district has adapted the evidence-based model of student-centered coaching by Diana Sweeney, and she is an educator, author, and expert in adult learning. And this model, instructional coaches, really allows our teachers to work alongside each other to design instruction that targets student achievement, and student outcomes, as data-driven approach to increase learning for all students. There's different practices to student-centered coaching, and the ultimate goal is to build a relationship among the coach and the teacher to improve student achievement. We have instructional coaches in all our schools, and their primary goal is to support teachers get instruction which in turn will improve student commitment. So I'm just going to briefly mention the seven core practices of student-centered coaching, and then allow our instructional coaches and our teachers to really be able to share their experience with you. So with the instructional coach model, it really is about coaching cycles and goal setting, really looking at student learning targets and evidence of that learning, and then really coming alongside the co-planning and co-teaching of our instructors, with our instructional coaches called measures at student learning and teaching for both students and for teachers, and then obviously the partnership that we have with the instructors. So we're going to start, I think, with our instructional coach, Deb Tumble, and she was brought to be a teacher from Oliva Elementary, Elizabeth Palmer, and they're going to share a little bit about their experience with student-centered coaching.
Thank you so much for having us here. When Jen asked, it wasn't hard to say, yes, two weeks, we do a ton of love with a job at the U of M. It's my 26th year, and like there, I had lots of different jobs, and right now I'm just feeling really, really proud of the work you do as a team, and that we have partnerships at our school. So thinking about overall, my goal is teaching to work with teachers, but to also just be a champion for teachers, because they have so many things going on, and so, so much data to look at, and so much work, and I think our work has really helped that's, that data-driven instruction happen, we've helped navigate data and think, okay, what do students need to know and be able to do, where they at, and how they can get there. I think it's really helped that clear being focus, and our goal also is that sustainability, so even after we leave, after coaching cycle, the, that strong, high-end framework continues to use of us. So the majority of our time is coaching cycles, but like all of us, our job has many other dynamics to us, to it, and sometimes that changes the morning we get to school, depending on what's happening in our school that day. But I do meet with my principal, Jorge Eaton, once a week, and we talk about building needs, individual teacher needs, student needs, and we really kind of made a plan for the whole year. And I think our work has really helped that data driven instruction happen. We've helped navigate data and think, okay, what do students need to know and be able to do? Where are they at and how can they get there? And it's really helped that clear being focus. And our goal also is that sustainability. So even after we leave after coaching psycho, the best strong client network continues to use us. So the majority of our time is coaching cycles, but like all of us, our job has many other dynamics to it. And sometimes that changes the morning we get to school depending on what's happening in our school that day. But I do meet with my principal for eight, once a week. And we talk about building needs, individual teacher needs, student needs. And we really kind of made a plan for the whole year that was focused and all of our work really comes from this. So at Oliva, we did a reboot of CITs. That's kind of like our collab, well, it is our collaborative U three teams. It was the old PLC. But basically grade levels get into groups, really look at data and then build that collaboration of that expertise between them. And how they can really focus instruction to each needs. And that also helps us because it's easy in our career coaching psycho, once they identify their needs. Our model is the gradual release of responsibility. I do it first, then we do it, and then you do it. That is our model of our professional development, our model for working with third and first. You may have heard that we're really focusing on the big five, we met the science of reading. So I can be a partner to that, to take the research to that practical classroom level. And most recently, we, we went to a training through the University of Minnesota on tests. And I've been doing some class wide interventions with teachers. And then that continues when we're gone. So it's based on a screener. We find out exactly where our students are and their redevelopment and we meet them there. And that's really encouraging those tier two interventions and fix that just came that little push in our receiving service anywhere else. It's giving teachers a really, really highly effective tool to make that happen in their classrooms. So really quick, Elizabeth luckily teaches right across from me. And she had a couple of cycles. So if you remember, right now I thought it was perfect for the first week one of our coaching cycle. So jump in if you need to, but I didn't make little notes. Following the CIT, I met with Elizabeth and we really looked at her data. We looked at best bridge data. We looked at previous MCA data. We looked at interest inventories and realized that in the writing mostly, we were noticing kids were not using a lot of expressive language. They were just very simply written at the end of the year and even at the winter quarter. But we know that writing and reading are very difficult in nature. Meaning if you become more adept at writing, you're being, you become more into reading the writing. So we decided to go back and integrate the poetry unit a little bit earlier than planned. So after we looked at the data, we identified our goals, we teach your language. And then we need to put those things into new targets because kids really need to know what they should be communicating, learned it or not. That's a really powerful tool. We co planned how we were going to deliver that instruction. So far I've got some co teaching. We do luckily, we can very well look at our models. And next week I'm going to have two classes. And then in about four weeks, we will, we meet weekly and sometimes over lunch. But at the end of our cycle, it's when we'll reflect on student achievement. We'll see those certain areas hopefully a lot of growth. See what, what should continue in the classroom, what instructional strategies shall continue and if there's any further support needed. So I'm going to turn it over to you because we all love school examples where we love, I mean, we love kids. So this is just after our first week of writing. Elizabeth read a couple of poems.
Yeah. And firstly, when you say they're really poetry to the middle school creators. The distinct cry of utter hatred through the room. And it's, and all I say to them is give me two days and there's a day before it. Poetry is my most favorite thing to teach because I just believe poetry can incorporate so much fun. So first I want to start with one poem that just really hit me by a poetry there named Pade. And this is something we could all learn from. He said, you gotta work, work your way to the top. Work, 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 even if it means to get a little dirt on your shirt. If I work, I can have anything in life. I know it. If I work, I'll become a legend, an athlete, a writer, an activist. An activist is what I want to be. And if I work, man of possibilities, I can see. So if I work, I can be anything in the universe. So my students help grow gifts of writing and they, they do love writing. The last time I was saying, I would see very simple sentences, not a lot of in depth in the writing. I really talked about adjectives, 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 use those adjectives. Use figurative language and they're looking at you like, what? And now I'm finding out with their comprehension as well, reading comprehension and the higher level text, there's so much symbolism. And there's so many things, similes, the metaphors and different things in the writing that they have to be able to understand or read in the context of be able to understand what a comprehension. And so poetry is great to do that because poetry can be very confusing. And so Deb has come in and the first lesson we did with them is talking about seeing through a poet's eye. And talking about how a poet can take anything around them and turn it into a poem. And we're talking about pre verse poem, pre verse writing. We're not talking about like picoos and things like that. We're talking about just getting that feeling and emotion that in depth, talking about getting your thoughts and your heart on the paper. And we talk about the heart and the mind and writing with poetry. And so we started out by Deb showed pictures of everyday objects. And she started off with a picture of a pencil sharpener. And the poem that she shared with the kids, she asked the kids, what did it look like? And they're like, oh, pencil sharpener, are you sharpening pencils? Well, the whole poem that she sprung up to show them was about how it was buzzing, buzzing, buzzing inside. And all of a sudden the bee comes out with the, with a sharp point. So yeah, the pencil goes, the pencil sharpener, but talking about putting that pencil in and then at the end of the bee coming out with a sharp point. And the noise on the inside of it being a buzzing sound. And the kids were just like, what? And so we really stretched them to do that as well. So here's one from a child in my class. And we said they could only take everyday objects. So this one's on, I'm going to jump in this one when I'm looking at some students. Also the thing about free verse is there's no rules. So kids really, when you want creative writing, take away the rules, no capitals, no periods, no commas. And I think it's just amazing what your kids came up with. Yeah, I've given that to them. So this one is about a tissue. Soft, being pulled up from its place, almost too frail to touch, like water slipping from your hands. I hear the tissue being set free, floating towards the floor. Another one from fourth grader is about a paintbrush. Paintbrushes. The first line brush feels like a leopard's fur, so full of life and action. It looks like it was dipped in fiery magic, so ready for more. I don't want to taste it, but it looks so good. Washing down, washing down the paper full of color, one smell touched after another. It smells relaxing or sort of nice, like I can just sleep in it forever. I feel flowing colors, many in turn, more coming slowly. And that's true really, you compare the five sentences, you talk about that's a strategy, go put your sentences in there. That one, I can get any plus. And now after we just done instituted some of these metaphors, I, today it wasn't obvious, topic, remember your topics? But just today, seeing that thing, and then you go to the next step. And I, I get goosebumps when I put a little game in my classroom, I bought a fake stage, like a hanging up fake stage. So my classroom looks like a fake stage in the back. And we have, we have to go up and read their poems behind it and they think really like serious work. And we just sit there, we have goosebumps. And that's one of the standards is for the, for all of their poetry. They don't really know that. They just think it's fun to sign up. But I think it's a great. And then at the end, we go to assessment after we get through all of the standards we're working on. And I can already tell in their writing, it's been hundreds.
All right. Next, I'd like to introduce some Delcy Anderson, she's from Central Middle School.
Hi, so thank you for taking the time to listen. I was very excited to share this because this is my first year as instructional coach. And I, you know, came at the end of the summer. So I learned the entire department panel when you done your book on student center coach. So I got the pleasure of coaching myself through the book, which also allowed me to perhaps learn things a little bit different. So when we came together as a secondary and we were sharing our findings and our learnings, you know. We tried to come up with a way that we would incorporate student centered coaching into our routines. And because the book is more towards elementary, it was a big challenge to come up how we were going to do that as a secondary. But when I read the book, I did not know I was geared towards elementary. I thought it was for everyone. So in my head spinning, I just came up with all the great ways that as a middle school teacher, I would make this work. So that was very helpful to just really focus on that. And then we were able to make with Kim who really took it to a step further of what it should be a secondary. So the biggest challenge we found in secondary is that each teacher is an expert in their own content. Unlike elementary, whereas one teacher is teaching all the content and the content is at elementary level. Versus it's high school or in middle school when you have to really be an expert on the specific subject that you're teaching. So as instructional coaches, we don't have that expertise secondary to be able to just step in and come up with this amazing ideas on how to specifically teach your content. So also the schedule was very limiting because every hour the teachers are rotating, right? So as coaches, we cannot just work with one teacher for an entire month for all of their months. Because many of us have quite as many teachers that we have to go through on birthday. So what we came up was as instructional coaches, when it was the time for teachers to be on their cycle of coaching, they had, I gave them some choice. Over that is looks pretty much like what elementary did with our students, their distance learning, which had just probably like 20 options of how as an instructional coach, I could support them. So some of the options came from things that we learned as instructional coaches that the teachers are looking for. And others came from things that the ability kind of five as me. So my job is gathering resources, help serving and give feedback, but also like that student centered coaching that we just started doing. So that one, that did not start very strong. I was offering teachers to partner this student centered coaching definitely in partnership with instructional coach and the teacher. The idea of, you know, two, three weeks with me every day did not seem very attractive. Because it would be too much work to just give up time to be able to plan through all of that. So I did spend a lot of time doing observations more than anything, kind of like what teachers felt more comfortable of what we did. But slowly, you know, with those new teachers that are eager to learn and want to go through every P P. That was, we were able to really start to lose some partnerships. So I got to work with one teacher who was struggling with classroom management and then class at the end of the day, where everyone is exhausted and students are just checked out. And they didn't need that extra support in that class. And I started just going through that to be that extra support for her. And then we started having reflective conversations about how things were going. And that's why I was able to introduce this to the center coaching. So that was in December and I spread all of January with her. So like my colleagues here said, it's an entire process that we started with setting the goals with what the teachers want to do. So I approached it from a point of I was able to incorporate the cognitive culture side to it. And coached the teacher to what their goals were for the year and how things were going and come there. Find that why did we want to focus as instruction when it come? And what things were stopping the teacher from having the classroom that they wanted to have. Some of the common things are the idea that students now are so different than they were before. They come from the, from what the homework, so I don't know, I do teachers on, when we are co teaching or modeling, what's that holding really looks like? And how we are working with the students to really get them away from the homework and what independent learning that student literacy looks like. And we'll be able to also do a lot of strategies, model strategies for teachers to then implement. One of the great things with our secondary is that I just have to, I just have to be able to work with the teacher in one month. And letting the rest of what we are doing together, they can take it to the other classes and practice in it during the day without me. And then during the class, either on that same day or the next day, we reflect on how it went when I was there with them versus how it went and felt when they were dependent. Because one of the big things is making sure that it's not just modeling for the teacher to repeat what we're doing, but that these strategies are offensive, feel offensive to the teacher. So they can be doing it on their own. Like they mentioned that slow release of responsibility. So when partnering with the teachers, we talked about the different styles of co teaching. Based on the teachers going on their study on themselves and the teachers going on what the students can do. And depending on that, then I choose if we are going to mirror teach, which is when we're all teaching at the same time, our students are kind of working with us. So the teacher is able to observe and do at the same time. Or if we are co teaching, which requires us to plan the lessons together every day. So we each know what we're saying. There have been opportunities where we've been able to reply to how our situation for teachers are just very stuck. How to incorporate something into the lesson because they're looking at it from content expert. So it's very easy to be like, well, if I just teach it like this, it's very, you know, they'll get it. But as a non content expert, I come into the room, showing the strategies, but not necessarily knowing the content. So it's very helpful for me to be able to ask a question about why, what do we learn at a specific way? Which has also helped the teachers reflect on their instruction and delivery through the students. I think that that's probably one of the things that's become a definite has been the most helpful that even able to say, oh, okay. So I was thinking as a scientist, so this is very easy for me as a scientist. But if someone who's not a scientist, like I'm those students, that's as important as they need. Another, other thing, other ways that I like working with them is teaching us support. So just like a TA model, the teacher is teaching the class and I'm just working around helping the students and making sure that they're staying on task and following those things. That has been a very helpful for moving the students to complete the projects. So we're kind of working at the same time. And then team teaching is the other part where we are just, just going back and forth. And I can also strategy and then the teacher can maybe repeat the strategy for back and forth. So these are just how we started with the student center. I am now on my fourth cycle with the teacher because the work is spreading. And that it's not as time consuming as teachers might think it is. Because in reality, I have to work for one class, which takes a lot away from them. And then very, very part time we take, instead of taking the entire time, I just take ten minutes with them of reflecting. What they did, how they did, how it felt and what other ways we can be pushing as an instructional expert. I do go with kind of like a little group break of just information of what are we looking at in the classroom? And what teachers have to kind of self assess, how they're doing on their work base on, you know, relationships with students, having students, boys. How they're sitting in our classroom, the opportunities for collaboration, just everything that essentially have identified as some T S S on the bar. So I go with that to see how we are, where we are and where we feel comfortable to let know what can be worked on. Another great opportunity that this has allowed me to have is I also, we do the seventh grade team meetings. So it has been very helpful to be in the classroom for so long to really be able to do that and connect with the students. Because now on that, as an instructional coach, sometimes the students will can say, who are you? They see me as another educator that's been in their classroom. So when we are in student team meetings, I've been discussing students that they're flappers on what farming is. It's just very helpful for me to support the teachers in interventions that we might need to do according to MTSS. Because I've already seen the students in the classroom, so I've already had the experience of the survey. because I've already seen the students in the classrooms. I've already had the experience of the survey. So that's been very helpful. I am here presenting secondary. So each teacher is doing it a little bit different depending on their building, their strength. But I did want to share Shannon Trickle from North Campus. She had two teachers in some test and model meals about how students and coaching has really helped them in the secondary. So Cindy Swanson said that the benefit of having another set of ties and another point to create contact for students is very valuable. That she's got in a library of strategies that line up with each aspect of talent, which North Campus is really focusing on. People already know through her strategies. Struts, trusted, non-determinant, colleague to mom's ideas of a constant solution. And that is something that I can definitely tackle that aside from working on or reflecting with my colleagues during the cycles, they really save the value of being able to just tell to someone about the crazy ideas that they may have. And that person helped you to the trouble shoot or improve them or just make something awesome. We actually did a very podcast project that was nine in the calendar. Like the students were going to write papers a lot of them. He said try it and we turned it into podcasts and stuff. So whereas I was able to resist them, we were able to come through that. Hannah also at North Campus is asking questions about curriculum designing. We freshly stepped back to the big picture when I'm helping stuff and day-to-day planning, something very common for us as teachers. And the student-driven data, helpful especially while creating new material, is something that we have really heard that the teachers appreciate the value of being, having the time, almost force for someone to see like, oh, we need to look every day. Yeah, we need to see how, where the students are doing, how they're doing and not just go on a daily construction. So wish you that a lot. I'm just getting resources to do this one way.
Kim Raj of Otter Lake Elementary. I'll try to keep it brief. I'm Kim Raj. I'm at Otter Lake Elementary School. I'm trying to think now. This is our second year in instructional coaching. And really instructional coaching, we utilize that students are coaching because it keeps the students centered and aligned. We also utilize a thing called cognitive coaching, which helps to build that collective capacity and efficacy within teachers. So we're there as a person to listen to, but also someone to provide some questions and strategies for how to do the work when there really challenges along the way. At Otter Lake, I collaborate with the teams of teachers. So this aligns with perfectly well. This is just that guarantee for all students of student outcomes across classrooms. Not just one individual classroom, but we guarantee high-quality instruction from all of our students. And utilizing these coaching cycles, it provides that child-infected professional development that's ongoing, continuous, keeping those learning targets at the forefront, those standards as well. And one of our goals when we're working with, when I'm working with teams is that it aligns for district goals and our building goals as well, which are also closely aligned for strategic planning. And so when we're talking about our learning targets, when I'm starting an instructional coaching cycle with a team, we're looking at what do we want students to learn, where are they at now? And then it provides that teacher clarity around what are we going to do with students? Why are we doing this? And then how are we going to do this? What's that highway that that is on instructional practice? It's really a collaborative partnership. So and when I partner with teams, I'm partnered with them for quarter-long cycles with more than one team at a time. And oftentimes I'm in classrooms probably sixty to eighty percent of my day. And then twenty to forty percent of my day is doing other things like M T S S leadership and other things that I'm doing throughout the building to support our student goal. And when I'm in this coaching cycle, I'm in classrooms in a variety of co-teaching models. It kind of depends on the teacher, what their goals are. So often times, you know, especially in the first few years of instructional coaching, we have to develop that task. So sometimes that quotation model looks like the one teach, one observe. I have to look for. These are things I've got to look for while I'm instructing the students. We know what our goals are. And then it's a constant continuous ongoing measure of student learning. No body impact, right? And so we can't just teach, 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 teach and then assess later. We need to see how our students are learning along the way. And so then as that, the quarter goes on, I might model for a couple of weeks, engaging in these conversations, wanting to notice, these I've looked for. And then eventually I'm more sent to this co-teaching where we're doing things together. We're bouncing that instruction kind of back and forth amongst of each other. And honestly, at an elementary level, our lessons are mini, mini lessons, fifteen, twenty minutes max. And students are engaged. It's not only teacher-directed, it's teacher-facilitated. So students are engaged throughout that lesson. And then by the end of that cycle, it's a one, it's a one teach, one observe. And so now as I'm looking at the look forward and we're giving that feedback for how was your instruction going? Like how are we noticing from students? What are we seeing as our results? And what kind of things do we need to continue to adjust and modify to meet the needs of the students? And so all of this is done in a way that it's like supported throughout our, it's just a part of the way we are, the way we operate. It's our culture and our building. It doesn't feel like it's me versus them. It's a, they're all of our students and I'm on that work team, on current the team. And so it really feels like a really great collaborative effort. I just love the work I'm doing, love the work that teachers are doing and the work that students are doing as a result too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. May I open up for questions or comments?
You guys have a couple of questions. So if I'm at another school, how do I get selected or how do I get the opportunity to work in the program?
I can answer that. So we have cycles. We have teachers that have been identified like in either, that are not at their checkup with the principals. So then they work with us and as instructional coaches, we divide them by month to kind of see when we complete our cycles. And we send them in, you know, hey, this is the time for your coaching cycle. Here are different options of ways we can do it. So we plan kind of finally where the teacher decides like, I want to do a student center or no, just come and observe or maybe get gather resources or here's a project I'm working for. But for the student center coaching, it really needs to be the teacher has to choose that that's what they want to do. But if that is goal, we need with that powerful, an observation of the memory function.
And then I guess my other special would be, you're really doing a lot of staff and so are they getting C E U's to this? Otherwise, it would be all, but it really should be making.
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Dr. Arkan, because we haven't, we haven't touched that yet. So that's something we really into.
And then the last thing I was wondering is, it really sounds like what you're working on could lead to educational rounds. Especially I think in secondary level, we can feel a bit bigger where if there's something that's really good at something you want to learn, then I can bring other teachers in, we can watch it, we can discuss it, and then we can try it. And so I heard that we were trying something that I had on the day, just bringing, we're up to educational rounds and learning about it. It sounds like you're on track to do that virtually.
Yeah, we have actually as an M T S S team, I know those will come from all of you that right now with the teachers. So as instructional coaches, one of the options that they have is that they will go up with their class and then they can go and observe a colleague. So part of it that they would have to create. A lot of times it can be like, hey, as an instructional coach, I suggest like so on so for you to go and observe and then you're coming. Thank you.
Just a little bit of your elementary level too. I know that coaches, a lot of the principals have worked with the great L C I Ts as well to go through those same exercises. It's really not hard to get any real time and I don't know.
Jen, you would remember when we were doing authentic instructional at work and we had the teams and everyone got the face first. And I kind of wondered, do all of your teachers, COVID interrupted, but do all of your teachers get the face? Kind of like we had the authentic instructional plan that came up from the Bible, I think. And we did it for three years in every subject, whether it was good or not. And your team worked together and looked at things and observed each other. But there was always time that you had a team. So and our team was always skittles. Some people really wanted to work like more individually together because they had more specific types of teaching they wanted to do. But the decision was made that we would be mixed so that we had dip more different viewpoints on it. And the best part of that whole thing, we all did the book and we knew it and you designed at least a couple of lessons a year and based on that and you had the number certain percent. But the feedback between the team was, was where it was really useful.
Yeah, yeah. I, oh yeah, go ahead.
It, it sounds kind of like what you're studying, working in the middle school without maybe everybody having that basics first. Because if you're only going to teach the basics of it to everyone and convince them it's a good thing, it's a lot of extra work where if everyone gets a nice introduction, then it's not such an uncertain thing to jump in and say, hey, I'm going to try this.
I've kind of mastered a lot of alignment with the C I Ts and I remember the core teams of that same kind of feel of when we experienced the A I W. And I do think we took more of an organic approach with students in our coaching than maybe what we've done before with other professional learning, just for that aspect, you know, it really needs to be teacher-driven and building that relationship and trust.
I think we done, and this pulls a lot of the, but I wonder how much bases people get. So that your instructional coach who's in the school doesn't have to do the sales and the instruction. If everybody had a base, do we do that? Do I look up for some?
That was something we identified as we're in, the coaching, the student center model works best when you have a partnership with a leader of the school who is also very intuned to what it looks like and they build that with you. So typically, I think for all of us in the beginning of the year, before we start anything, we provide that overview for the, for everybody. And then when we are working with the C I Ts and then only for you each every Thursday as grade levels and we've really developed norms of collaboration and really made effective teams. Because of that, it allows the coach then to go in and support within that team. And then every now and then we get to a single as well. But I do feel like we've gotten better at providing that piece for everyone.
But I think it's not a job, maybe it's helpful when you get a base and then people have an expectation. It's not quite such an uncomfortable thing to do something like with this.
Do you see more, I know we've gained narrow teacher self-value and we've started to build trust. Do you see that increasing, more people see the value of that for support?
Absolutely. I mean, and it should be many things in a culture, right? It takes that, it takes time to develop that. And absolutely, it was very different the first year. But I also had a leader who was, we had that same vision around what this looked like. And we built that map within our team and across buildings that we all agree that this is what it looks like. And all of our leaders are on board with that team and all the coaches are on board. So it's taken time. But then as we've gotten in fashion over the years, more people are reaching out and more, and more, though it's a different, especially at elementary level. It's different at the secondary. We have a, you know, smaller, more of a mini-syiah. But we do allow more team teaching to, rather than just individual teaching. Same approach, but have a little bit of that. We need to start doing it. And it's really trust within the team and it's developing that as well. So it's not just a little.
How does this translate in part to supporting people on the top of that?
So I, you know, I can speak to, we do have an instructional coach who's been working for, highly retired instructional coach, who's been able to support this learning teachers for student-centered coaching as well. And so obviously those things look a little bit differently just because it is online. But we're able to still support distance learning students and teachers with, with their support as well. And also I think this was in my training with elementary level, some of those staff are housed at Otter Lake Elementary. So some of those staff have joined some of our C I T meetings for professional development, our staff development days. And so I've also been in contact with some of those staff throughout the building and passing too. We've had some of those impromptu coaching conversations as well, in addition to going on purchase of wonderful assets. She was part of our team, retired and from Seattle.
I've been reading with some third graders to get some class. It's fun to read with them, but also a little, a little concerning what these students are, you know. I mean, I don't want to say they're falling behind, but I see it's definitely impacting them from being in that, in that environment. The TV is on in the background and they got the stupidies running around and there's extra distraction. So I'm just wanting to make sure that we're also, you know, I'm sure we are about, that that part isn't being left out for the, you know, those kids, all of our kids being helped. I see that's going to be an area that we're maybe need a little more attention. But get those kids back up here. Well, I feel like a little bit of elementary school poetry every day would be bomb. So please tell your students that I love their excellent work. Right. Thank you all very much. What's, Dr. Mesut?
I just thought with your comment about poetry, I wish, I hope their TV would last excellence tonight because I've always thought today. So I'm sad that the poetry and the productions are going on now because it is bomb to the soul. Kids' creativity.
And we're moving into our last discussion item of the evening, discussion item B three, the F Y twenty-two point three, four, their budget planning update. So all with the stock.
Now, thank you. So the February fourteenth, we're going to work through the budget adjustments for the twenty-one, twenty-two, otherwise known as fiscal year twenty-two budget. And you can also look at the projections for fiscal year twenty-three budget, which signals some needs for budget adjustments for us here. We're going to walk through a little bit of the guiding principles that we'll be using. Our next, our intent will be in about a month, at the March work session to have the budget adjustments ready for the work group. For the enrollment for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is two hundred to eighty-one students below the budgeted enrollment projection and not expected to recover as far as possible. And so that's across the nation, school districts are down about thirty percent. In areas where there are lots of good choices for schools and lots of opportunities for families to make other choices. They see a little more enrollment decline than other areas. Like early, we have multiple opportunities for families to competitive place for schools and families complain. Can we make other choices? We're very aware of that during the pandemic. Some chose to do that. As we finished last year, you recall that case rates for Delta, for COVID were starting to recede and people were feeling pretty good going into the summer and then early August, the Delta variant. We're going to talk the end and we're beginning to get very nervous. So we thought we would see a little bit of the enrollment recovery mystery, but the opposite is another step back. So two years in a row of enrollment decline have had a serious impact. Second reason for us to be talking about budget adjustments is unfunded mandates. State federal revenues are not adequate to meet mandated programs. We've talked many times about the cross-op city and special education. We have robust special education mandates. They're good mandates. They're the right thing to do. We serve students. We need additional support. We, we will continue to do that regardless of requirements. But state funding has not kept up with that movement on those mandates. And then finally, this is that strictly funded education, the basic norm is possible. And this next slide really shows, shows that visually and puts it twenty years of school funding. And the blue line is where we would be. Yet the twenty, the two thousand and three student formula would be simply adjusted for C P I each year. We'd be at. simply adjusted for CPI each year. We'd be at, would be at seven thousand four hundred, seven thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars per student this year when our formula is at six thousand seven hundred twenty. So that additional five hundred and fifty dollars roughly would equate to about five million dollars in revenue for us year over year. And so that over the over time is a really serious reduction, I suppose. So we encourage legislatures from year to year to continue to prefer to start making school funding a priority and make up for the lost ground by making school funding. Our enrollment projections, you saw this chart in January. We looked at that orange line starting from the left in fourteen fifteen shows our actual attendance and you can see a steady increase. We had demographic studies done that supported that that line would continue to affect the black dotted line was those was the pre-COVID projections based on our demographic studies. In fiscal year twenty-one, you can see that orange line drops down and we revised our budget to the gray line at that point. And we expected that for fiscal year twenty-two, we would see modest increases in enrollment. We had quite the opposite happen. Delta hit in August and made very, it made many people very concerned that the distance learning requirements again, I think some people may be very careful and follow other educational opportunities. And so that bottom line then is our enrollment projections adjusted and what we're, we're taking a more conservative approach, expecting that at some point enrollment will recover. It's not going to happen quick. In fact, we read over the weekend, the article in the St. Paul Finger Press, a projection of a lot of activity or enrollment will recover. So in fact. But if you look at those numbers, you can see, you know, a decrease of two hundred eighty-one off of our projections. This year, that's off of our projected three and twenty-five year before. So we're feeling. Mr. Primer, we talked about this a little bit in December. Just a reminder where do our funds come from? The blue area shows state resources. And so that student formula six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars tied to enrollment roughly equals that number. Special education at fourteen percent. And then the orange area, property taxes, they're operating with the and other levels that comes to about nineteen percent. One thing I do that's that hasn't been on here in typical years, and that's the red wedge, which is federal COVID relief funding, five million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand. And that number actually drives the percentages down and everything else. Typically, that state resources would be in the fifty-six, fifty-seven percent for state funding. Special ed would be in the sixteen percent range. Local taxes or property taxes would be the twenty-one, twenty-two percent. So that drives, because that's an increase in revenue, not by this specific source, but during those other years, no, it's all. So that's where revenue comes from. Andy will talk about how our money is spent. And you can spread that too.
I forgot, it's hard to see the numbers, but it's more missing. So where where do we spend all of our resources? And as we all know, we are a control heavy organization. The vast majority are spending towards like sellers. So that's about seventy-nine percent for this year. Purchase services is eleven percent. And the largest item that goes to that is our contracted transportation. But that would also have items, different purchase services, like travel would go there. The tuition invoices for students who are attending different programming at nine sixteen or the average, they coded it as well. Then the rest is about four percent goes to supplies and materials. Capital expenditure is at about five percent, which also is where the bulk of our monitor facility maintenance funding gets coded. You know, if you look at that previous slide, our L C F revenue is about six point nine million. So the vast majority of that will be L C F related. And then other, we have lots of business lands, things for about one percent. So when we're looking ahead at what our budget adjustments might look like, we definitely take a hard look, a microscopic look at our furniture services, our supplies, and see where can we really start to narrow those down and take the impact off of the staffing. But it's inevitable, especially this year, based on the past, we're going to have to look at that for this round of budget adjustments. Just another way to look at how our funds are spent is by program area. So starting on the right, you can see that our regular instruction is about forty-four percent. So that's just regular classroom teachers and then going around clockwise and then up, but one percent goes to vocational ads. So a lot of our fax programming, business and just real arts. Then special ed is about twenty percent of our total expenses for our school district. And instructional support services, that's going to be items like technology, media and our, our assistant principals get quoted there as well. And then pupil support services make up our health offices, our counselors, our social workers, and some of our achievement integration program may get supported there. Transportation and about five percent of our total expenses, sites and buildings, that's both our operational, our custodial department, our different operations, but and then also capital, some of our capital projects. And then L T F, oh, L T F is separate on this graph, at about six point seven, six point nine million, five percent. And then again, we always have that other about one percent. Administration would be like, would be superintendent level, assistant superintendent and principals. And then district support services would be like finance, H R, communications, a lot of the district service or district center homes. So again, just to prove this assumption, it's all very fresh to you, but just to highlight a couple of items as we've been looking forward, how we arrived at our budget adjustment targets. Really maintaining that focus of maintaining our fund balance policy of eight percent is how we got to the projected three point eight million dollars of reductions for next year and then one point four for the following year. And want to highlight again, as Tim had called out, the decrease in our revenues for next year. So we're going from about one hundred and twenty-eight million of total revenue for this year and then down to one hundred and twenty-six million next year. And that reason for the decrease is related to the federal COVID relief funding. So we're going to see about three point six million dollars less funding for next year in the in the federal COVID relief funding. So that comes off and then there's the increase just for the projected student increase for next year. Would that be helpful to look at what our budget reductions have looked like over the past several years? Since the nineteen twenties school year, we've actually had budget reductions of about six point nine million dollars. So this isn't new for our district in the recent past, unfortunately. But we thought this was a helpful way to kind of look at what we've done. So kind of starting at the top, I think this shows that we've tried really hard to keep the cuts out of the classroom. In total, elementary and secondary education has amounted to about nineteen percent. The vast majority of what we've done are really the easy reductions, the general administrative shifts, the things that, you know, we could code things a little bit differently or we can do a little bit lesser in our operating capital, we can shift some stuff around. And unfortunately, we've kind of, we've done all that we can with those reductions that are really kind of not as impactful to the classroom. Building and operations has, they've had about five percent. Special ed has been helpful in the budget reduction process to to kind of about fourteen percent. Teaching and learning has had some reductions and chuggling around, it's been twelve percent. Technology has had about three percent. Transportation, as we know, with this school start time changes, we were able to reduce some of the bus routes. And so that was about nine percent. Any questions on any of the reductions that we've done?
Kind of on the one just before this, because I thought, I know we got extra money from the ads for COVID relief, but we provided services that we don't provide now that we don't leave COVID relief. So it shouldn't be, I mean, it's still going to be a cut because we don't have it. We didn't spend it on other things. But what real percentage of that money that was given to us was given to us for things that we are required to do and we don't do anymore, like providing free daycare for essential workers and, you know, all the other extra things that we've done. And we had some extra services because we sought needs. But we're not, you know, bussing lunches all over time and things like that. So what percent of that money was spent on things we don't do now?
I don't know what percentage, talking ahead is something that I definitely get to. But there there wasn't a liability of doing what's called supplanting. So generally, when you have federal funds, you have to spend it on new spending, which is the majority of what we've done. But a lot of those funding streams, funding streams allowed us to actually supplant into the federal funds expenses that we already had budgeted. And so basically, it was a nod to the fact that districts are seeing less revenue and you're able to continue to employ some of your existing staff by using these funds. And so we definitely have made use of that liability. We've had a lot of home funding and I would say probably eighty percent of of our funding has gone towards new new expenses. But we have been able to shift some of our staff into into those federal funds to kind of have less reductions down the road. And we do still plan that a little bit with some of the federal funds that we'll have next year. We've kind of leaned ourselves down over the next two years with the amount of staff that we'll be supplanting. I just don't know what those figures write off the top.
That makes me understand the, it's just, I'm trying to understand that amount of money. I think you know what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because some of the, it shouldn't be quite as, it's still hard because of the number of students that we're losing.
But sometimes we've implemented programming like this year that we just won't have for next year, you know, we've made some, or maybe we'll have it for one more year, but then won't be able to, won't be able to.
Well, I'm thinking some of the money.
You know, stuff is one time, we'll have to figure that out next year or stock up this year.
So I'm going to have a bit more understanding of what we really have to cut that's actually solid versus what we were paying for with that extra money to help put the extra needs. And that will help me understand how severe is it to lose that.
Expenses to operate during COVID were significant. And some of those things will phase out. Give the example of HVAC, we're running our HVAC systems at a much higher capacity than you'd ever run them. And they're bringing a lot more fresh air. You have to warm all that air at a time when expenses, utility expenses are up. They're at the home, they're up here too.
Another good example is our COVID testing site. Right? So those funds may expire on June thirtieth. And we've been told many, many times, they will not carry forward. They they're not allowed to be carried forward. And so unfortunately, we don't have the resources then to have that yesterday in July. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the question. Any other questions?
Just one thing that I'd love to point out with this, just for context again, too, where we see the secondary elementary numbers there in the budgeting history, just to point out that in that same period of time, we've not actually increased class sizes at all in either the elementary or secondary. So as we've gone through these years of budget reductions, we've had no upward increase to our class sizes, it's come down slightly during that same period that we reduced six million dollars. So just another piece of kind of context there, yes, that shows this year. But if that's the case, then that was to bring back down because of students leaving. So that's where that reduction would have come.
And just one, I'm looking at the historical perspective because I'm old. And my kids were class of ninety-three and ninety-seven. And class of ninety-three was the, well, was those kids were born during the recession. I think we're going, that's one of the reasons our demographics are old now. It's not just that they all went to other schools, but there's just not that many little kids being produced during the last year or two. At least, that's what the problem is. That's it. And then I do remember the class sizes and I was a classroom teacher once, returned during one of those years. But I know my daughter, who was a tenth grader, so she graduated in ninety-seven, after tenth grade, never had a class on the floor.
That would be.
She was in advanced classes and they thought those kids can do it. And I remember kids sitting on boxes. It wasn't a good thing. We'll have flexible furniture and we'll have a big new building, let it be that. Or you've got kids in every class. That stuff too.
So that is very much not.
No.
In terms of our.
We spread the kids out. We were trying to have smaller groups.
Right. I just want to make sure that's not where we're sitting.
No, but I'd say we've been there before. And yes, it saves money, but it's not necessarily the good thing.
No. Right there with that. And that's exactly why over this period, we've seen substantial reductions. We've worked really hard not to see those, those class sizes.
And our, our boundary changes are trying to help balance some of those classroom sizes too, I would think. In the middle schools, balancing how many kids are in each campus.
We really do that for class sizes for the most part. It may help us a little bit with efficiency, for instance, where because we haven't seen those movements in a while, you can really see some inefficiencies when you're running two sections, grade levels, for instance, that can be super hard to balance. So where we might see some positive effects of lifting up the student population of some of our smallest elementaries, for instance, you know, we might get a little efficiency there, but typically it won't have too much impact on that class size. Just those little kind of blips that pop up, you know, where you have some of the tough decisions, especially to help improve their policies.
Okay, moving on. So as we've been working out what the budget adjustments are going to look like, we thought it's important to bring forward what our guiding principles have been. Our highest priority will be to minimize the impact on the classroom. Earlier, it's not going to be as easy as it's been the past couple of years, but that still is the number one priority. We are also always remaining committed to our equity commitment. And there's lots of discussions about equity as we've been looking at all of these to make sure that we're thinking about that, our, that, that ones. Also making sure that we can't just have those one-time shifts because they don't help. They just keep the hand down road. So making sure that everything that we're moving forward will be sustainable for most of the years. We know that attrition, such as retirements and resignations, will also factor into our staffing reductions. And we've shared, as we've been meeting with all of our buildings, to share that we're welcome to other class, kind of like suggestions we reviewed last year to think about, oh, is that something to think about this year? But just very open to other ideas, how to decrease spending or increase revenue. And again, adjustments for next year are projected to be three point eight million dollars. So timeline, after spring break, at the board meeting, we'll be bringing forward proposed, proposed adjustments will look like. And then asked to approve those at the March twenty-eighth board meeting. And then again, the preliminary budget will start to be presented to you in May and then approved at the spring break.
You have any questions, Ms. Thompson?
So if we're looking at the projected, you know, adjustments to be three point eight million dollars, where, where are we looking to hit the highest?
Well, I think all these, all these will be difficult. So our goal is to have this impact for classroom the least. But there's that three point eight million outside of the classroom to cut. So there will be an effect, there will be an effect on the classroom. And we looked at elementary staffing from pre-COVID numbers and we think we can get to those pre-COVID numbers. And so class sizes will look very similar to what we did in COVID. Right now, we're, it's not our enrollment, we're overstaffing the FTEs at the elementary level. So we can reduce eight positions at the elementary, get to our pre-COVID staffing level. And you'll see that saves. So then Andy mentioned attrition. Hopefully we have, we'll have some teachers retired. We get to lose great teachers, but we also congratulate them when they get to retire and some will. So hopefully we see very few reductions at the elementary level. Secondary, we're still working on, and that's. Secondary, we're still working on, and that's, secondary will be done.
Which is, to me, a little bit more of a tougher area because of the, the way they teach on that level, right? And the multiple classrooms that they're in charge of. And so the impact there to me is, the impact everywhere is just terrible. Really, when I look at it and I see how much the federal government provides public education in our country, it just really makes me a little bit angry, to be honest. But I can't, I can't only do so much about that and I can talk to my Congress members and, you know, the math's just changed and, so that's going to be interesting. So I know it says that, you know, general administration, it's thirty-four percent, but I would also think administrative staff earns the highest wages, if I'm correct in that, in our, in our whole budget. So when it says thirty-four percent, like, what is the overall, is there a number of people that we lost with that? Or is it just certain jobs are no longer here and so that percentage looks higher because they earned more wages? Like, does that make sense what I'm trying to? And I'm not saying that, I like, I don't want to lose anybody and I, I know that we're going to have to, but I just want to make sure that we're making sure it's balanced and that it brings me in for our equity director. Like, where do they fit in if that's possible? Because in order to stay committed for equity work for our BIOP students, we need a director of equity. To me, that's not something that's off the table or that can't be.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. Everything's being what it is. And to your point on that equity position, we agree that's a way. So we're, we're still indefinitely evaluating where we, where reductions can occur, what's the impact. We have a lot of conversations with our principals, leaders within our organization back through, and we've been having some of those, some of those discussions already.
It's just, it's hard. I know it's hard, but I mean, so I mean, I'll do more lobbying for more funding, but I don't think it's going to happen, you know, anytime soon. I don't see that changing, especially on the federal level, which I'm, you know, it's sad.
Would I, would say that just to your first question, when you look at that industry of administrative, that differentiation in pay doesn't account for very much of what we're saying. It's just, where are we looking as much of that as humanly possible? You know, the most significant documents that, that is kind of really relevant hasn't really come out of our teaching departments primarily. We saw very large shifts there over years ago as we moved into that instructional coaching model. We took something that looked much more like twenty-seven positions and moved that down to sixteen and took a much more student-based incentive approach to how we were there to kind of deliver that comprehensive district, you know, vision and plan. And so that's where that, the biggest piece of that really came over time. And then we looked at all of those other, you know, places too. So yeah, all of our different departments, you know, can you see there, we got the biggest chunk was in teaching. Yeah, for sure.
Thanks for your work, it's hard work. I wish the numbers were better for you.
Yeah, February budget forecast came out today, positive numbers. So we're thinking, we're hoping that there's some relief for us on the way through, see what happens. But we won't know that until April, May, maybe even June. And there's, there's really no clue as to how that's going to play.
There's all kinds of stuff.
It isn't your time to help with making staff at class. It might help bring back something. So we can hope for that. Somebody who left three things left in the district, we're even standing. It's harder, it's harder. I would just say, don't tell somebody in between classes.
I think we will story that.
Yeah. I have a question. So I wrote down the numbers for special education funding and our expenses at twenty percent of our costs are twenty-five million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand. And our revenue is at fourteen percent, which is eighteen million, three hundred and one thousand. So that would mean, not a math person, but that's a little over seven million dollars of difference. Is that a direct correlation? Like, we spent twenty-five million dollars on special education, but we only get eighteen million from the state. That's a disgrace. And so I guess my question is then, with the cross subsidy, is there even a remote possibility of coming up with some of that difference? Because seven million dollars is, is an incredible amount of money and all of those services we need to make sure that we're offering.
A ninety million dollar surplus, you would think.
Something.
There would be something.
Yeah, but I, but I mean, that, that to me is really starting that, you know, I have a student, one of my kids has IP and he has four of her members on his team. And we need for those individuals to make sure that he's successful in school, not one kid. So I guess that's the part that I'm really interested in hearing about as we move forward. And hear from the legislature, if there's going to be some relief on that.
I just, I spent time at the National School Board Association Conference and the advocacy institute, that was one of the biggest things that they talked about the entire time. And there is a lot of work that's being done to change those numbers, but it's not, you know, like control, I mean, I don't know, if we could do it, we'd be like, yeah, we need more money, but we have to advocate for it.
I think, and I don't want to belabor the point either, but we talk a lot about other internal cross subsidies that we have to. So we get dollars for EL, but as we look at the challenges that we have, wanting students to be successful, we have a general fund, the cross subsidy, to make sure that we're supporting EL more than what we get. We talk about TSS and when we talk about tier three interventions. You know, when we get to that place, we've got a significant cross subsidy there because through apps, through all those different funding sources that we get that are directed there, we still don't have enough compared to what we think we need in order to move students from A to Z, you know, and see that, that growth happen. And so, you know, we talk about all of that internally, so it's not just on that front. That whole cumulative effect of when you're trying to create something, it's going to improve students, then, you know, we're the short and lots areas, so you can kind of pick.
And the chair of our education on the legislature right now is getting writing the buildup on how to make our teachers have more work at the beginning of the school year by creating things like a syllabus that every teacher kindergarten through twelfth grade has to give all parents at the beginning of the school year that tells them exactly what their child is going to learn naturally. That is what they're concentrating on working on instead of things we actually need.
So I guess, I would say, and you'll, you'll let us know as we meet in March and everything, to what you hear from the legislature, I would be really interested to hear along the way. And I know that all the work gets done like that last month, but you can keep us posted.
Typically, typically by the end of May, we have a pretty good sense because we know that we're both sides are, by January, we can sometimes incorporate that into a bunch of things. It's kind of actually stony at that point, so I have to be a little bit careful, but usually we can figure it out with the helps in Senate and Governor, I'm saying, on certain things. We've got to make a reasonable estimate as to what it might be, a real estate estimate, without being overly optimistic. But best case scenario is that the work session in May is the first thing we talk publicly about what we might be getting. That's usually how it works and it's not always the case. Sometimes it happens in between the work session and the June board meeting. And then we're trying to find, you know, budget order come through in June.
Pre-COVID, like January, when, that's my first time. Weren't we, like, weren't you saying, Tim, that we had finally started to gain a little ground with our stuff?
And we have agreed to gain a little ground.
But it's just not.
Yeah, so cross subsidies, less than it was a few years ago. And so it has, we, legislature has made some progress on that, so it's a paper for the progress they've made, you got to waste it all. Seven million is a big.
It is.
Dr. Lester? I like the work study session because you gather a lot of data to think about. And one other aspect of students that impacts, and I don't know what the percentage is, our special ed kids have an awesome program in the district where one of them, whether it's autism or whatever, we've got outstanding programs and we pull in kids from other districts. And that's a lovely compliment, but it's also a cross subsidy worth. I'm just curious, and I'm not saying no, because I think it's impressive that we can do this for kids, but what percent are we pulling in because of our amazing programs? How would you, how many kids do you think come for us for?
Is it the other sense of that?
I'm just curious, yeah, I can get that to you, I have it, I just haven't looked at it.
I think it's something, this is something I answered, private directory, but I think approximately twenty percent of the students who open and roll in see special education is overall about sixteen percent of our students. Is that about, is that about right in terms of overall number? So we do see a larger percentage of students coming in and receiving services.
I know people would have come to the district for the program that honors their families.
Yeah, that's one.
And it's a father.
Buster for the rounds, I went and dropped. People went, so those are more accessible programs.
Any other questions about the weather? Like, I said, when you're looking at, so, you have to look, like, you're not going to know until later, you're going to have to.
So we're going to have to plan at this point, you know, have to be as draconian as, as we have to be in the beginning here. So we have to be pretty conservative in the beginning because after April first, we're not able to look at reductions for continuing contract staff. So we have to think, how bad would this be and that's really where we need to act as of March twenty-eighth as we were. So, you know, and that's what we can then hopefully walk back from and offer opportunities back from. And so that's an unfortunate part about the timing, it's fortunate and it's the right thing to do for teachers so that if you think you might not have a gate, you know, early and you're able to be looking. It's unfortunate though, because it does mean that we sometimes need to go a little, you know, further on that side.
You could land with somebody.
Yep, absolutely. And we do know we work really hard on that too, and that's kind of the science and the art of delivering those messages and for people to understand what those opportunities would look like, or really cutting people free as they're saying, we know this isn't going to work. So how can we help?
Well, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. I am second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, close, same sign. And we are.